Good evening and welcome to the May 13, 2019 Council Meeting and Public Forum. We just have a slight change in the order of business this morning. We have a few applicants for boards and commissions who missed their interviews two weeks ago. And so we are going to begin with just these three quick statements from those applicants. So they'll go first and then we'll roll into the regular public forum. And I'll give you a little heads up that there are 42. How many people are signed up today for the public forum? About 42 people signed up for the public forum. So I am going to cut the time back to two minutes because Council also has a pretty full agenda following that public forum. So I'm giving you a couple of extra minutes to go through your comments and edit them down. And so I think we are ready for the first candidate, please.
Shouldn't the Raji Brannys get more time because there are more than... They should, really.
Because there's eight of them.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Awab Rawi and I am here as an applicant for the civilian review board. So I want to talk to you a little about my interest in serving in this board. So a little bit about my background. I came to Eugene, Oregon about 10 years ago. I left my home country, Iraq, as a refugee and found myself in Eugene, Oregon, knowing no one and nothing. And it was just an incredible story. But with the support of the community and the generosity, I was able to find my success, stability, and finally, a new home, really. So every chance I have to provide service and kind of pay back for the community, I raise my hand first and volunteer for that. My particular interest in the civilian review board is because of my professional and academic experience. So I graduated from the University of Oregon School of Law in conflict dispute resolution. And I think that is well-aligned with the service and the goals of the civilian review board that it provides to the community. Throughout that program, you know, we learned a lot about mediation, community partnership, building relationships, and all of that good stuff, and preventing the escalation, de-escalation of conflicts. So, and recently, in my work experience, I worked for the state as an un-buds person. I'm not sure if a lot of people know what an un-buds person is, providing basically investigating complaints against state programs and just finding fairness in the process, integrity of program, and justice in the implementation of services of the state programs. And I found that to be amazingly rewarding. I believe that the service on the civilian review board is also similar in that aspect. So I could bring my experience to this board and hopefully serve it in the best way possible. And I don't want to take any more of your time. I know we have only three minutes. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll be announcing our decision at the 7:30 meeting on June 10.
I'll just explain that as president of the council, it's actually Counselor Taylor's job to oversee this process, which is why she's now stepped up.
I'm not trying to become mayor. Welcome.
Thank you. I hope I'm not stepping into anyone trying to become mayor. Mayor Venice and respected, honorable council members here tonight, thank you for allowing me a moment to speak about my interest for this civilian review board. My family and I moved to Eugene about seven years ago, and we have loved the feel of Eugene, and we intend to raise our family here. My two daughters, my mother-in-law, three pets, actually. We love Eugene. And now that I can say that I really am part of Eugene or feel part of Eugene, I want to give back to it in some way. I'm also a combat veteran, and I know in my own way what it's like in that split second of decision-making to pull the trigger or not to. I know what it takes to have that power. I know what it takes to abuse that power. And I know what it's like to have privileged access to information and to be able to access that information and use it to benefit myself or to harm others. In that way, I have a strong sense of the power that police have. I also have a strong sense of the responsibility that police have. That comes from such power, and I can empathize with having to balance that power on a day-to-day basis in the multitude of contexts that police experience. While my experience was short-lived, many officers experienced that day-to-day for many, many years, 20 years or plus years. I also empathize with civilians, though, who place their lives in the hands of police. When I was in the Marines, I entrusted my life to my commanding officers as well as my fellow Marines, and their decisions at any moment, especially during combat, could end or save my life. I understand what responsibility in that way that police have, both in terms of their own safety and the care that they are entrusted to, or that others that are entrusted into their care. My interest in serving on the review board stems from this kind of empathy. I can empathize with both sides that often are at odds in the most difficult of situations. When everything is wonderful, we tend to get along. But when things are in their most stressful, it is even harder for us to empathize with the other side. I believe that's one of the strengths that I could bring to this review board. I also want to help serve as that trusted friend, that trusted friend that can tell you when you're not thinking straight, when you're going down a wrong path, but then can also sit there and support you and celebrate your successes. That's how I characterize the role of a civilian board. It's to both support and challenge the police system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our decision will be announced at the 7:30 meeting on June 10.
June 10. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thanks for holding this makeup session. I'm Randy Prince, applying for the civilian review board. I have previously served on a city board. The two terms on the toxic board that provides some guidance on the implementation of that toxics ordinance. The toxics board and the civilian review board are the two city commissions that were created by Citizen Initiative. Rather than being created in accordance with the wishes of the council or the manager, the departments, they exist because the people wanted it. And after more than a decade of operation for those two, I think that they both shown themselves to be an essential tool for the city government to monitor its own performance. When I was appointed to the toxic board, I was designated as representing the advocacy interests, one of the three categories for members of that board. I qualified because I'd been part of the community that pushed for the ordinance and establishing the board, similar to the case with this one. And I was pleased to represent those voices, though I did not feel bound to vote with the advocacy members at all times. I do remember one important vote where I defected from the advocacy block that was supporting a big budget increase, and that forced us to reconsider and reach a consensus on a more modest proposal. The civilian review board does not have such categories of measurement. But among those serving on the board, there are, of course, sympathies and bias in both directions. There are others with some connections with advocacy, like myself, with advocacy for strong oversight. I just feel that lately, they haven't been quite outspoken enough, not in the meetings I have attended. A CRB meeting I attended earlier this year discussed the case of a misbehaving man who'd been detained by volunteer deputies, was not physically threatening those, holding him, but less than a minute after regular officers arrived, he'd been tasered. Well, he didn't die from it, only a small percentage of people do, but it did seem against policy. And those who supported the police action were outspoken, and one recent appointee declaring, "I will always, always give the benefit of the doubt to the police officer." I don't agree with that sentiment. I do not agree with taking the opposite approach, but I will compliment him on at least being open and clear about his views. Those who disapproved of the officer's conduct and the lack of discipline were a little bit reluctant to express their views, I felt, at least in the beginning. And although the board was obviously split, no vote was taken, and there really wasn't clarity about what the board's ruling was. And I would like to help correct that type of unsatisfactory resolution. I also like to thank the police auditor for providing information about the potentially lethal effects of tasering that oversight advocates on the board did seem unaware of. And he does seem to have earned the trust, both citizens and the department. In addition to my experience on that board, I have been involved in neighborhoods, chair of Amazon Neighbors, and one term as Chair of Neighborhood Leaders Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our decision will be announced at the 7:30 meeting on June 10. Now I'll let the mayor take over again.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right, welcome. We are now ready to begin a public forum.
I just heard a couple of questions about Jam Allison.
Oh, sorry.
And they are not present, so we are complete with the candidate statements.
Great, thank you. All right, although I know most of you here know the rules, I'm going to reread the rules again. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of two minutes. And a reminder, we have a full house tonight, and it's important that everybody who speaks feels that they are being listened to, that you're quiet and attentive and respectful of their time. And so, you know, you can always show your approval by wagging your finger, wiggling your fingers, but we ask you to stay, stay quiet. And I don't know if we have a warm-up chair, but maybe we could put an extra chair in front. So I'll call two names at a time. The second person can sit in the chair close to the podium so that we can make a fairly seamless transition from the first speaker to the second. And we have a total of 42 speakers. The first two, Todd Boyle, followed by David Ivan Picioni.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Todd Boyle in the Amazon neighborhood. I want to talk about the TAC report and the, thanks for the hearing today. I found it wasn't very surprising of how it's being rolled out, having the committee in place and so on. And I support the TAC process. I think it's great that it's been... But as soon as that TAC report came out, the people that I was hanging with immediately identified where's the housing that they're going to get exported out to? Where's the, where's the exit point for these thousands of people that are going to go through the pipeline? And so I want to talk about the unavailability of low-income housing again. So quickly, let's just go through the numbers, that there are over 36,000 people living on less than $1,000 a month here in Eugene and more in the county. And they can't, they can afford something like $350 to $500 a month, the highest income person in that ranking, and the rest goes down from there. And rents are much higher than that right now. And so basically, there is a pipeline that exports people and displaces people continuously into homelessness. Now, during, the reason I'm here is because during that process, when those people are being exported to homelessness, they go through a grinding and a stress buildup that's well described in a lot of books you can read, like Wilkinson and Pickett, or books by Bejaruska up the University of Washington. It has proven effect on people, that they go into stress, then this causes a family breakdown, addiction, violence, and all the things that were the reason why we're having to deal with homelessness at great cost. So here's my suggestion. Make it possible for people to house themselves cheaper by taking obvious choices that aren't being taken anywhere in the Northwest, by allowing us to repartition our lots into smaller pieces, allow people to build and occupy tiny houses. Tiny houses are being built all over town for less than $15,000 that are fully insulated with R19 and R30 in the ceiling, and it doesn't cost a lot of money. And what you have to do is to let people live. And you can, you know, I live in a structure that doesn't have a bathroom, and I have to go to the main house to go to the bathroom, because you guys maintain these rules against accessory dwelling units in the Amazon neighborhood. And it's not a problem. What you want to have is tiny houses around the lot and a house where the people can go and use the facilities.
Thank you.
Cheap solution, private sector.
Thank you. Thank you very much. David Ivan Picioni, followed by Abraham Lukwornik, sorry.
David Picioni, Eugene. I just had a brief epiphany sitting over there. I was thinking about obscure and very little-known precept of Buddhism that says that nobody should destroy places of habitation. So I was thinking, yeah, people live in houses, it's not good to bomb them because cement is very energy-intensive and producing, and as is wood, as is glass, plastic, copper. But actually, there's also the places of habitation of animals, which we should protect, which are getting, we're getting less of those with more people, population growing and less places for animals to live. But the primordial place of habitation where we came from is right on the street, and that is illegal. It's illegal to sleep on the street. So I was listening to the talk that you all had with county commissioners, and it was obvious that, I mean, it was clear, it was, it was said there that the payment for the housing for the homeless was not really detailed and understood well yet. So what I would suggest is, before getting into debt, putting Eugene into a financial debt, which will grow exponentially, is start small, making bathrooms that actually stay in one place for more than a year. Public showers, places where people that are homeless can put their belongings and lock them, what do they call them, whatever. Yeah. So, oh, and coming here to talk is hard because...
Thank you. Abraham Lukwornik, followed by Becky Brechner.
Abraham Lukwornik, domicile in southwest Eugene. On and for the record, this is a legal notice to the city council, city manager, and mayor of the city of Eugene. Here's a quote from the Attorney General of Oregon. Quote, "The Tenth Amendment to the United States Constitution prohibits the federal government from requiring state and local governments to govern according to Congress's instructions, or from commandeering state and local officials to administer or enforce a federal regulatory program. This anti-commandeering principle also forbids Congress from unequivocally dictating what a state legislator may or may not do," end quote. All of you have knowingly, willingly, and intentionally chosen to act in such a manner that blatantly disregards this doctrine. You have chosen to continue to publicly and falsely claim FCC regulations preclude you from passing a moratorium or taking other actions to stop the proliferation of small-cell antennas and harmful 5G radiation. You put yourself in legal jeopardy of being judged to be perpetrating a fraud by deception, concealment, and misrepresentation. Your actions could be deemed a violation of your oath of office for intentionally denying the legitimacy of the Tenth Amendment. Your abuse of discretion and reckless misconduct violate your duty to protect the fundamental rights of health, safety, security, and privacy. You are acting beyond your legal powers or ultra-veres. To keep from continuing to commit these offenses and take full responsibility for your actions, you will be required to cease your false claims and publicly acknowledge the anti-commandeering doctrine as proof of your ability to now pass a 5G moratorium...
Thank you.
...without further excuse.
Thank you. Becky Brechner, followed by Julie Tilt.
Becky Brechner, Ward Three. I would like to ask Councilperson Allen Zalinka a question, or any other councilperson who would like to answer either now or during my two minutes or at the end of the public comment period. I would like to know when you are scheduling a work session on 5G to adopt an urgent ordinance or adopt a moratorium until the safety of 5G cells can be proven by the FCC. We want a moratorium on new small-cell towers and a robust revised aesthetic cell ordinance to fully protect residential neighborhoods, schools, and hospitals from harm of millimeter waves from 5G equipment. If you are not scheduling anything, we want to know why. We deserve an answer on this question. You said in your April 14 memo from the city manager's office directed to the mayor and the council that you could impose an aesthetic requirements. All of your actions have to be ADA compliant. How will you protect these people and the growing numbers of people who are medically diagnosed EMF-sensitive? I am one of those people, me.
Thank you. Julie Tilt, followed by Sabrina Siegel.
Good evening, honorable council people. I'm Julie Tilt from Eugene, and I have two businesses in Eugene. One is Hummingbird Wholesale, I co-own with my husband, and I'm also a health coach to have my own business. And honestly, I have ignored the EMF issue for many years. I've heard about it, but I just think, frankly, I didn't want to know about the health issues because we already have enough to contend with in our, in our current world in terms of toxins that our bodies are dealing with. However, I've been getting clients who have severe electro-sensitivity, electromagnetic sensitivity. And so I've been doing a lot of research, and I've taken courses in electrosmog and learned about it. And now I have actually healed my own health challenges by mitigating the EMF in my own home, and it's the first thing I do with my clients. I have clients ages teenage to 72, and it's the first thing I do is I go to their home and we, with my, I have all the four meters that you need, and I determine what's going on in their home, and we mitigate it. And guess what? Their symptoms get better. So I don't need any more scientific advice than that. So we already have enough toxins in our environment today. We don't need to keep adding. The 4G is already way too severe for all of us. The current rate of Alzheimer's is now 50%. So that means we will, 50% of us will die of Alzheimer's, and that is rate, that is rising every year. It used to be that heart disease was the number-one killer in the United States, and then it became cancer. But now it's neurological disorders, and it's from EMF.
Thank you. Sabrina Siegel, followed by Isadora Siegel Coxen.
Hello, thank you, counsel. I'm in Allen's ward, and actually, we tried to get an appointment with Allen, and he didn't respond to us. And we have no idea of your thoughts about the 5G, Allen, and we wanted to educate you and speak to you more about it. And we would like to hear from all of our council members. I think we only hear the feelings of a few of you. And you are our public servants after all, and we would like to know what you're thinking. So please, in this meeting now or after the meeting, we'd like to hear your thoughts on this, because we've been educating you for maybe six months now, bringing you the best of science, international scientists, world. We went to see the mayor, and we brought her, a renowned scientist in this area, and he spoke with the mayor for an hour and told her the grim truth of the 5G and how, you know, we could expect human extinction should we go forward with this insanity, actually. And anyway, I'm an electro-sensitive, too, and I know the intimacies of this whole thing, and I know what people are going to experience, the neurological trauma, the brain damage, the heart failure. People have electronic implants, pacemakers. This is not compatible with, with that reality. And so I want to repeat what Abraham said. We know by the, the anti-commandeering doctrine that you have the authority to protect us to... So we need a work session. We need a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Isadora Siegel Coxen, followed by Dr. Michi Okuda.
Hi, that was my mom, and she, you can obviously see that she doesn't like 5G, and I don't know a whole lot about it, but, you know, from what I've heard, it doesn't sound good. And so she's planning on leaving Eugene if it does come out, which I think they're planning on doing. And yeah, I don't want to have to leave Eugene. And yeah, I've lived here for 11 years, and that sucks. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Michi Okuda, followed by Barbara Wade.
I'm Dr. Michi Okuda. I live in west Eugene. I've been coming to Eugene since I was six years old. I'm in my 60s now, and I, too, will have to leave Eugene because I'm on the borderline of being electro-sensitive. Former entomologist, research and extension, now I work in energy medicine, doing healing work. So I am a sensitive. So anyway, I wanted to inform council people about a study that was done with San Diego firefighters back in 2001 to '04. This is 2G to 3G technology, million cycles per second. We're now in the billions of cycles per second in 4G to 5G. So this is substantial damage caused by a lower level of radiation, of radiofrequency microwave radiation. Firefighters were unable to operate. They had cell towers on their fire stations, they had insomnia, foggy thinking, depression, anxiety, unexplained anger, immune suppression, more colds, flu-like symptoms, extreme fatigue, cognitive impairment, anesthesia-like sleep. The alarm would sound, they'd be really foggy, could barely get up. Insomnia, 2004, so this was 2001, 2004, all firefighters that had been in a station that had had a cell tower in it for five years or more were, their brain scans were taken. All of them had brain abnormalities, all of them. Anybody who had been exposed for five years or more in a fire station at this lower level of technology in millions of cycles per second, megahertz, were now in the gigahertz level, billions of cycles per second of our cells getting hit per second.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara Wade, followed by Joshua Korn.
Hello, I'm Barbara Wade, Ward One. I'm new to the 5G group, and I didn't know I was electro-sensitive until I discovered more recently that I had a meter, one of the so-called smart meters that make you stupid, right outside my window. I live in Westmoreland Apartments. First, my cat got very sick after almost $900. I thought she was dying. It turned out she had nothing wrong with her. Then I ended up getting vertigo and a lot of the symptoms that were just stated just, just recently. And it was only a week ago that I discovered I had a smart meter on my, on my home where I live. And no one was, no one called me, and this is what's happening, and what's... And what's sad to me is I'm a senior, I'm a healthy senior, and this year also I had the coughing thing. It went on for a month. I found out when I had my meter turned off that it had been on my building since December. It was no wonder. My cough, my immune system went down. So that's just with a smart meter coming into my house. I had it turned off. A lot of the symptoms have subsided. My concern is when 5G comes in. I'm a, I am a healthy senior. I feel like I will become that person that was sicker and other unhealthier seniors, you know, God help them. So I would like to see a moratorium and at least a work session on this because it's really important for seniors, children, animals, all life. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Korn, followed by Raging Grannies.
Joshua Korn, Southwest Eugene. I, I think, I think the FCC and the industry, the telecoms like to spread this notion of doubt about the mechanisms, but we know the mechanisms involved in EMF and microwave radiation and then this, this new millimeter wave technology. And we know that the effects are cumulative. So it's really time that you guys do the right thing, enact an emergency moratorium on 5G and small cell antennas and, and do the right thing because the, the bottom line is that we have sensitive membranes in our cellular structure that are, that are, that are allowing the nutrients in and protecting what we have in our cells. And, and these are, these, these voltage gated mechanisms that, that, that people like Dr. Paul have articulated extensively in, in the research. And, and this is, it's not just with calcium, but other potassium and other nutrients are, are allowed to flow in, in, in great quantities just by, by small pressure in, with, with the voltage from electromagnetics. And, and so we, we know the mechanisms. It's, it's happening, and these fields are everywhere. It's enough is enough. That's where we're at right now. So we need to stop this before these transmitters are turned on. So please do the right thing.
Thank you. Raging Grannies, and they will be followed by Sue Sierra Lupe.
My name is Barb Prentice, and I'm in Greg Evans Ward. The Raging Grannies are testifying tonight to urge the city council to address the issues of providing adequate public toilets, which would improve the livability and welcoming aspect of Eugene as well as helping to maintain a standard, a sanitary standard of public health. As older ladies, it is an issue dear to our hearts and bladders.
(Music)
Watch me do my desperation dance, I wet my pants.
Folks gotta eat, then they street. They shouldn't have to do it in the street. Can't help taking a bio break. Can't help taking a bio break.
Thank you. All right. Sue Sierra Lupe, followed by Donna Riddle.
I am Sue Sierra Lupe, and I approve of that message. I'm also the clinic manager for Occupy Medical, still. I have, obviously, I work with very patient people, when I said still. I have been coming to city council to advocate on behalf of public health since 2011. My voice has joined other community members' voices in making Eugene a safer and healthier place for all citizens and visitors. Our requests have been the same all these years. Some of the requests have been honored, thank you, and some of them have not. The crests, the requests that I am bringing represent the views and experiences of volunteers of Occupy Medical who hearken from a dizzying collection of clinics and hospitals throughout Land County. Public sanitation is the cornerstone of public health. Today, I am focusing on poor accommodations for public sanitation. As a, as a personal note, I come from a military family. As far as lessons that I have learned from that experience, it can be a bit of a mixed bag. However, one of the things that I learned is a lesson of preparedness. When preparing for an encampment, as a general rule, latrines are dug first. The number of latrines are based on one commode or urinal per 25 male soldiers and one commode per 17 female soldiers. According to the FDA, again, "public waste containers should be," and I quote, "installed so that accumulation of debris, insect, and rodent attraction in harborage are minimalized." Unquote. Of course, the FDA has a lot to say about hand washing stations and drinking water, so it's not just Occupy Medical. Although this city is not an encampment, it is the second largest city in Oregon. We have actively been preparing for the Olympics. Heavy traffic areas such as public parks and walkways need to be readdressed if they become public health threats. Let me close by saying we need more bathrooms, more garbage cans, more secured Sharps containers, and we need them now.
Thank you. Donna Riddle, followed by Susan McComson.
Donna Riddle, Springfield, Oregon. And I was very interested in the work session that you had earlier. And one of the things that I would have liked to have heard was about removing the barriers to housing for people that is created by criminalizing sleeping by, because when people have tickets, then they get a criminal record, and when they can't pay those tickets, then they get a poor credit history, which makes it 10 times more difficult for them to become housed. I also want to follow up on Sue's statement about sanitation. Summer's coming. You guys were able to provide lots of drinking fountains for a recent public dance event. We need public drinking fountains so that our people don't get dehydrated, so that they can be healthy. We need more bathrooms that are open all the time, not just when nine to five, when someone's there to see that they're monitored. It costs a lot of money to chase people around, and we really need to have more bathrooms, more ways of people disposing of garbage, and more consideration for their humanity.
Thank you. Susan McComson, followed by Sarah Buren.
My name is Susan McComson, and I am here with Extinction Rebellion to ask you, what is it going to take you to take climate catastrophe seriously? I bet if I asked each of you individually, you'd tell me you believe the science, maybe with the exception of one person here. But you do nothing to show that you actually realize it's a catastrophe. You've done very little on your climate ordinance. You seem to be more focused on kicking homeless people out so that nobody sees them. You spend your money on horse troughs to keep them off the streets, but you're doing nothing about climate change. I have kids, you have kids, grandkids, maybe great-grandkids. Would you sit there and let them die because you don't want to do anything about it? Because that's what you're doing. We have five to 10 years to turn it around, and you're doing nothing. You're paying your city manager big bucks to kick people out of this town so we don't see these dirty people. And you're doing nothing about climate change. And no, Mr. Clark, it's not funny. It's pretty darn scary to me. I have kids who will not have children because of what they will face in their future. So laugh all you want. You, if you're serious, you believe the science, then get with it and work on climate change. Most of the people in this room that I know have changed their lives. They don't drive, they walk, they bike, they take buses, they have smaller houses, they have huge gardens. What have you done, as city councilpeople? What have you done?
Thank you. Sarah Buren, or Buren, followed by Carolyn Partridge.
Yeah, my name is Sarah Buren, and I live in Councilor Semple's Ward, as do my grown sons and my grandchildren. Certain historic moments are so charged with moral urgency that we've got to act boldly and decisively to change course in order for justice to roll down like waters. Now is such a time. The scientific data is in, and yikes, we have a mere 10 years to decarbonize our systems. Northwest Natural would like us to believe it's possible to continue using the carbon-based product they purvey and still achieve decarbonization. Theirs is the silken voice of a captor trying to convince us, his captives, that we are not not free. Fracked gas is by nature tainted. Shale formations are blasted open by pressurized chemical cocktails. The process poisons land, water, humans, and animals. In every phase of production and delivery, methane is admitted to the atmosphere. It's like we're living the plot of an apocalyptic horror movie, isn't it? But guess what? You have the power to stop the monster, to stop the monster's reach from spreading. Your potent tool being the city's franchise agreement with Northwest Natural. 350 Eugene has provided thorough, well-researched recommendations for transitioning this community off fracked gas. These recommendations are sensitive to financial impacts on current, especially low-income gas users, and hold the large, and hold the largest industrial emitters accountable. If we do this right, Eugene's just transition could be a model for other communities.
Thank you.
For my grandkids' sake, I hope and pray we do this right.
Thank you. Carolyn Partridge, followed by Deborah McGee.
So Mayor Venice and members of the city council. My name is Carolyn Partridge, and I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. And I'm here to speak about the renewal of the Northwest Natural franchise agreement with the city. I have been a customer of Northwest Natural for 19 years. In 2000, we moved into a home with an ancient oil-burning furnace that was on life support. After investigating our options, we decided to replace the oil furnace with a 90% efficient gas furnace. We were told at the time by Northwest Natural that gas was plentiful, which is still true, and clean burning. Also, it would be cheaper than heating with electricity. We thought we were doing the best thing. About 14 years later, our furnace broke down and replaced it, we replaced it with another gas furnace. Had I known then, or originally, that electricity from EWEB is so much cleaner in terms of carbon emissions, I would have chosen an electric heating system. Instead, I have a $6,000, I have $6,000 invested in a furnace that may last another 10 to 15 years. As much as I am concerned about the environment and the climate crisis, our retired household cannot afford to replace a perfectly functional furnace. We can and do pay into the Smart Energy Program, which helps the capture of renewable gas. However, at best, renewable gas will only be able to replace about one-fifth of Northwest Natural's supply. In order to avoid future situations where customers are caught like I am, the city should include, should consider including a caveat in the new franchise. The company should not be allowed to extend service to any new customers. Another idea is for the city to pass an ordinance that 10 years hence, all gas appliances must be replaced by electric. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah McGee, followed by Paula Stout.
My name is Deborah McGee. I've lived in Land County for 37 years. I hope you've all heard of the latest report from the UN, 450 World Scientists, 1,800 pages. It's called the Intergovernmental Science Policy Platform on Biodiversity and Ecosystem Services. You can read the three-page summary. You may be shocked. It is a scientific fact that our survival depends on the life support systems, services provided by biodiversity, provided, for example, by insects. Survival of our species depends on the survival of pollinators. Without them, we will starve. By eliminating biodiversity, we are undermining the foundation of the interconnectedness of life. Climate change is caused by burning fossil fuels. We have to stop. We have to electrify everything with clean renewable energy. What's excellent move in this direction would be to engage in a Northwest franchise agreement of no more than five years while the community works on a plan to get off of gas and transition to electricity. No new pipes, no expansions, no more new customers. I say "our community" because you can't do it alone, and we, the committed climate community members, can't do it without you. You got elected to lead, you led by passing the climate recovery ordinance. Now it's time to lead on implementing the climate action plan. We know that sunsetting gas will be difficult, but we know we must do it. I don't know if I will see any of you in the streets getting arrested in a few years when mass civil disobedience is the only route left to make these needed social, economic, political, and cultural changes to confront the climate crisis. But I do know that if now you will do the moral, ethical needed changes with your policies, it may make the future less painful. Two weeks ago, we passed 415 parts per million of pollution in our atmosphere when we need to reduce it to 350. We must engage in urgent transformational change.
Thank you. Please stand up if you want this council to act on the franchise agreement. Thank you. Thank you. Paula Stout, followed by Kayla McDonald.
Paula Stout, Betty Taylor's Ward. I want to talk to you about public health concerns and about human dignity concerns. We do a point-in-time count every year. Our point-in-time count, we know, is a little below what really exists in terms of population that's unhoused. We also know that there's a trend for our unhoused count to go up in the summertime. We need to provide viable sanitation for those who are unhoused. In an organized camp like Nightingale, it's one porta potty per 10 people. And I think that using the point-in-time count gives us an idea of how many porta potties or bathrooms we need to have available just for the unhoused community. We also need to look at the process of going to the bathroom, which is you wash your hands, you have access to toilet paper, you have access to clean water. And in many situations here in Eugene, those are not available. Garbage services are not available. And so there's a human dignity concern, but there's also a public health concern that it would be really easy to have, especially in warm weather, diseases spread really rapidly. So in sanitation increases, our sense of self-worth... So sanitation increases our sense of self-worth, and it increases the overall livability and pride in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla McDonald, followed by Mary Osterman.
I'm Kayla McDonald. I will try to take as little time as possible. At the beginning of the Saturday market season, with only 48 hours notice, the Saturday market in cooperation with the Eugene Police Department took over the Wayne Morse Free Speech Plaza. Now, people who have been vending for upwards of 10 years without any trouble and without regulations have to purchase a $25 vending license to even be able to set up. Under signing this agreement, just to be able to vend, you are only allowed a four-by-four foot table space. Many of us who have been vending for several years without ever causing trouble had spaces that take at least eight feet, so now we cannot ever set up fully. This, however, being a bad thing is debatable, but the main issue is we are no longer allowed to have canopies or umbrellas covering our booths at any time. We are forced to sign this agreement to get the vending license. There are several excuses that the local EPD have come up with to enact such a ludicrous policy. One of the excuses that they say that the way that we set up is a fire hazard and that the companies are a fire danger. I would like to note that every single vendor in the actual Saturday market and the farmer's market still has canopies and is permitted protections from the elements. Another excuse is that the fully retatable police camera towers are somehow not able to capture the activity of the vendors. This is the other excuse that the EPD is using. As of Saturday, May 11th, the EPD told the vendors of the Free Speech Plaza that we are no longer able to use umbrellas to shield our own bodies. We were forced to put away the umbrellas that we were using to shield our bodies from the extreme sun and heat that occurs at the start of every Oregon summer. A large portion of the Free Speech Plaza vendors are medically incapable of being out with direct sun exposure, either by sun allergies, chronic illness, survivors of debilitating chronic illnesses, and people who have to stay on medications that conflict heavily and can end up being extremely dangerous with repeating sun-to-skin contact. This is a direct violation of the basic human right of being able to shelter oneself from the elements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Osterman, followed by Patricia DeVal.
I'm also here about the Free Speech Plaza. I have been going down there since my kids were little, and I have been vending down there for over 20 years. Only thing I would like is to be able to at least have the canopies. But they're not even letting us sell water over there to keep ourselves dehydrated. We need to be able to have the basic rights, to be covered and to be able to have water access where we don't have to walk away from our booths with nobody, because some of us are by ourselves. We do not have a partner. So it's really hard to go and get water when you have to stay at your booth because you have nobody to watch it. And I just, I watched these young ladies last Saturday look like they were going to pass out because of their health issues, and I was very concerned, the whole market. But the officers were very, very adamant that we could not have an umbrella, even though we have health issues. It needs to be addressed.
Patricia DeVal, followed by James Hatcher.
My name is Patricia DeVal. I'm actually in the Eugene First Ward area. I'm also talking about the Free Speech Plaza at the Saturday market. Every time I've been there, they've been allowed canopies, umbrellas, and water to be able to keep yourself hydrated. As stated before, Oregon's summer heat can cause anyone to have really bad heat headaches, can have yourself a heat stroke, or pass out from the heat. It's not easy being out there. All we're asking for is our canopies back, umbrellas back, and being able to have water out there again.
Thank you. James Hatcher.
Hi, yes, I'm James Hatcher. I'm also First Ward. That was my daughter. Anyway, I'm here to address also the issue of the canopies in Free Speech Plaza. As you can see, I've got severe sunburn from this past Saturday, because we were told that we were not allowed to have umbrellas or anything else out there. We're not allowed to have our canopies set up, so we're protected from the sun, as well as the customers that come in. And look at our wares, because a lot of times, our canopy extends over just a little bit to where the customer can stand under it as well and protect ourselves from this. Now, this is an issue that needs to be addressed, because Farmer's Market and Saturday Market, all those vendors have canopies, but we're not allowed to have canopies. So this does need to be addressed. This is a health issue, a health and safety issue, and it's a violation of health and safety. Now, we're told, hey, you know, this is a health and safety issue if you have canopies. Well, sure, it's a health and safety issue for us, not for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jack Welborn, followed by Oliver Duncan Alarion.
I've been in Eugene this time around about three years. I got five rugrats and 12 grandkids I help out with occasionally. I do Saturday market. This is my 11th season doing various markets. And my third season in Eugene, the first two, I helped Addison pass out his CDs he trusted me enough from the Drum Circle. He went out of there twice on a stretcher. This year, I asked the Eugene Police Department if I could at least put up a canopy for the Drum Circle, and I was refused. Because some of them people in there are older than I am. I'm in my late 60s. I got water blisters and burns Saturday. And I'm not exactly frail, but it gets old. I ran two seasons with a canopy. I don't sell dope, I don't sell edibles, I don't sell parfinea. I do medicine bags, healing stones, recycled leather, occasional knives, jewelry. I make custom jewelry, and I enjoy doing it. It helps me unwind on a Saturday. I like talking to people and working at it. But there are people out there that suffer badly from the lack of cover. I mean, when they told some of these people to put their umbrellas down, they had to leave hours early because they weren't able to shield themselves. I stuck it out, but I had water blisters. You can take a look at the arms. But I kept breaking so that they didn't get big for a couple hours there myself. And I've been out in the heat in the desert. I did 14 years in the service and 12 as a NATO courier. And, you know, it's going to get worse. You've got June and July coming up. This is only May. You're going to have people out there with heat stroke, possibly dying from exposure. So you figure it.
Thank you. Oliver Duncan, I'm not sure about your last name, so you'll have to give it to me.
Algen is the last name.
Oh, Algen, sorry. And you'll be followed by Claire Rebo.
Hi, so I'm Oliver Algen. I'm from Ward 2, and I'm here to address the board's frankly lackluster response towards the ongoing climate crisis. Now, the Northwest Natural franchise agreement is up for negotiation this year, and we are faced to make a decision: to extend it for 20 years and allow the proliferation of non-renewable energy development, or we can shorten it to five years and significantly reduce our fossil fuel emissions. Decisions like this may be hard to make because of the economic ramifications and whether or not it is really worth it. But let me ask you this. If we were to extend the agreement, we set a precedent that says we, Eugene, are okay with allowing fossil fuel corporations to continue polluting the environment. We can argue about numbers all we want, but at the end of the day, it is the message that we send to the rest of the nation that truly matters. If Eugene can say to oil and gas interests that we will not accept your despotic hegemony of our future, that shows not just ourselves, but the whole world, that climate justice can be achieved in the future, and that the fight for it starts now, and that there will be no exceptions. The research is in. There are cohesive climate action plans that have been published by various action groups and verified by scientists. We have the option to take action right now, and no matter the cost we may initially have to face because of that, we must go forward with a progressive plan if we wish to have a future at all. This debate is frankly bigger than us. It is about the fate of the whole world, and I urge you all to think of the message that we can send based upon the actions that we can take today. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Rebo, followed by Nancy Honert.
Claire Rebo, I'm in Ward 1. Eugene's climate action plan specifies reductions in fossil fuel use and greenhouse gas emissions. April 2019 reduction estimates show that existing community strategies fall far short of our targets. We know this is consequential. Exceeding our greenhouse gas budget advances crisis and collapse. We have three arenas for cutting emissions: consumption, transportation, building energy use. The Northwest franchise agreement addresses building energy use. 350 Eugene researched agreement options and recommends specific actions. None of these request an abrupt embargo on natural gas. The actions phase out gas over 10 years. 350 does call for a moratorium on new accounts. Adding to the fossil fuel stream directly defeats our goals. Biogas for building energy also defeats our goals. DEQ's 2017 biogas inventory shows that 100% of Oregon's potential biogas equals only 22% of our annual natural gas use. At full deployment, we would still be dependent on natural gas, on bio... We would add methane emissions through leakage, we would delay full transition to clean energy. As a society and as a species, we cannot tolerate delay. We need and can have an equitable staged end to fossil fuel for buildings in the next 10 years. Limiting climate change to a survivable scale requires success in every arena of greenhouse gas reduction. We have agency, we have means, and we are responsible.
Thank you. Nancy Honert, followed by John Thielking.
My name is Nancy Honert. I'm from Betty Taylor's Ward. Thank you, Betty. Northwest Natural Gas is a for-profit company, beholden to its shareholders. They have no mechanism for reducing their size or profits. They will try to portray themselves as partners. They will try to convince you that they're so vital that most of the allowable greenhouse gas emissions in Eugene in the next two decades must come from them. Like the cigarette and oil companies, they will try to confuse, tell us we need to think about it longer, tell us to reduce other fossil fuel use instead. They're simply not set up to do the job of downsizing, even if not doing it seriously jeopardizes their customers. That's your job. To meet the city's climate goals, you must regulate Northwest Natural Gas and provide assistance for gas users to transition away from natural gas. You must tell the citizens the truth, that they must pay $5 a month more now for natural gas use, or pay far more than that in the near future for climate-induced food shortages and disasters. This is uphill work for you, but the citizens of Eugene in the future, and many of us now, will and do see you as wise city fathers and mothers for doing this now. Thank you.
Thank you. John Thielking, followed by Chuck Ford.
Hello, I'm John Thielking in Ward 1. I appreciate the tack report summary that was presented this afternoon. I also noticed that Betty Taylor may be acquiring buyer's remorse about the new ordinance. I appreciate that, because if she found out about somebody who had difficulty maintaining their property. Also, I have a new project called thebusstation.org. It's a project to provide lockers for unhoused and housed people alike. You don't require to present an address when you sign up. It'd only be $15 a month for a four-and-a-half-foot locker. Currently, it's not going to be, probably going to be possible to have it be electrified with a lot inside the locker because of the possibility of someone storing a wet item inside the locker. But the scheduled rollout date is October 1st, depending on whether there's any cost overruns or any donations coming in. It may be shorter or faster. But I'm aiming to have at least one retailer take me up on the idea of putting a vending machine-sized set of 12 lockers in their retail store as a way of housing people's belongings. What else? Also, there's a fundraiser for Catholic Community Services on May 16th at the Gateway Carl's Jr., Notre Gateway Mall. They're donating 100% of their daily receipts for May 16th to Catholic Community Services. And if you're queasy about eating at Carl's Jr. because you think they're not vegan, they have the Beyond Famous Tarnell, which is based on the Beyond Beef Burger, which is mainly mostly from pea protein. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Ford, followed by Ralph McDonald.
I'm Chuck Arford and live in the Churchill neighborhood. Natural gas is a dirty fossil fuel, dirtier than coal because of the methane leaks associated with it. Northwest Natural, to its credit, participated in the Environmental Defense Fund study that found that 2.3% of all natural gas produced leaks as methane. And since methane has 80 times the atmospheric heating value of carbon in the first couple of decades, natural gas is having a disastrous impact on our client, on our climate, excuse me. In a recent guest column in the Register-Guard, Northwest Natural Senior Vice President Kim Hiding calls for people from different perspectives to work together. Yet nowhere in her two guest columns does she even mention or acknowledge the methane leaks. The most important issue regarding natural gas and the climate, and she pretends it doesn't even exist. Not only that, but the deep decarbonization study used by Northwest Natural, as far as I can tell, does not include the methane leakage in their data and tables, meaning this is a fraudulent document. If anyone knows different, please talk to me. And this is not new. They've known about methane leaks for years. The American Natural Gas Association in 2009 hired the PR firm Hill &amp; Knowlton, the same company who disputed that cigarette smoking causes cancer, to create doubt that greenhouse gases cause climate change. So I'm just not feeling it. I'm not feeling the love from Northwest Natural. I don't think they're bad people. They're just doing their job, which is watching their bottom line. But they're pretending to work with the community. We have to work with them. No, you have to work with them. Please keep your eyes open.
Thank you. Ralph McDonald, followed by Chris McAllister.
Good evening, Mayor Venice and councillors and Eugenians. I'm Ralph McDonald, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward 2, land of trees, flowers, may pollen, pollen particularly heavy right now. But I would like to comment on a couple of things. Firstly, I take my dog to the Amazon Dog Park, and my dog does its business, and we have ways to deal with that. But right next to the Amazon Dog Park, there's a very nice taxpayer-paid-for-human place to do your business, and it's always locked. So I'm thankful for the raging grannies tonight, because I'm of that demographic that I need to go to the bathroom a lot more often, and I find places locked. I have a way of dealing with it, which I'm not going to talk about, but there are tall waits around that bathroom. But anyway, I want to talk about the Sustainability Commission recommendations to the council, and there's a couple of them. One is on the Northwest Natural franchise agreement. There's been several speakers, so I'm not going to use my time to say you should take it, pay attention to that, take bold action. You know, is Eugene, little Eugene going to be a drop in the bucket as far as climate change? Well, Chicago and Kansas City, other places, need to have a catalyst to see what can be done. We'll be one of the first in the country. We need to take bold action. And the Extinction Rebellion speaker tonight got my attention on that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Sustainability Commission has forwarded to you, thanks to Councilor Semple, some ideas and recommendation on fast-food plastics. I'm speaking as an individual, but I'd like to say that the cups, you know, Florence, Oregon, and Portland have banned extruded polystyrene styrofoam. Let's take a step further. Let's think about cups, because it's, you know, cups are 25 cents, but this is a 25-cent item that can be reused, and poor people can save money.
Thank you. Thank you. Chris McAllister, followed by Lee- Chris McAllister, followed by Lee DeVoe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members of the public. My name is Chris McAllister, and I'm a Springfielder who's coming here to talk about homelessness. With that in mind, I want to thank you for your comments earlier in regards to the TAC report. I know it's not been easy to navigate through all these data points, but we are working hard to try and find meaningful solutions, not just Band-Aids. And so part of it means coming to the table. With that in mind, there are costs associated with a lot of this. There are public health, public safety, emergency preparedness costs. There are costs associated with inaction, with misaction, and with restorative justice. Sometimes we don't get it right, and we end up having to pay for it. So I ask that we be mindful. And so with that, with that idea of cost in mind, I ask that you consider, as this body, the following four items. Please be clear. Tell us what you're going to do, when you're going to do it, and how you're going to do it. We have June 2019 to 2020 that we really need to find out where will people be. We can find out where they're going to live permanently if we know where they are, where we can start to send services, where we can start to send medics. Please be strong. Stand up for your beliefs, for your platform ideas, when they are judged by the media to be inaccurate, when they're judged by the people to be too slow. Be strong, be assertive. We will see the leadership, and we'll be able to follow it when we hear you know what you're being clear about. Be compassionate, please. There are people dying out there. There are elders who are being priced out. There are people who have no other options. And there isn't going to be some magical item that's going to wash this all away. We have to really roll up our sleeves and work. And so please be thrifty. If we do it right now, if we do it right now, we will be able to save so much in the future. Our people need us, and you guys are leaders by example. So thank you.
Thank you. Lee DeVoe, followed by Terry Parker.
My name is Lee DeVoe, and I live in Ward 7. I'm here to ask the council to reopen the public bathrooms downtown and in the parks 24/7, because that's what the need is. It's that simple. The reality is, there are unhoused people living downtown and in the parks. They have the same biological need as you do. If they can't access the toilet, they will urinate and defecate anyway. Opening the existing toilets will benefit everyone. And although there will be extra maintenance costs, it's cheaper than legal and court costs, which don't solve the problem anyway. It is also the decent and humane thing to do. And really, that alone should be sufficient reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Parker, followed by Linda Kelly.
Good evening. My name's Terry Parker. I live at 18th and Jefferson Street, Ward 1. Thank you. I'd like to start with a quote by Nathaniel Rich from his book, Losing Earth, who says something that I feel so much better than I can express myself. "Everything is changing about the natural world, and everything must change about the way we conduct our lives. It's easy to complain that the problem is too vast, and each of us is too small. But there is one thing that each of us can do ourselves, in our homes, at our own pace, something easier than taking out the recycling, or turning down the thermostat, and something more valuable. We can call the threats to our future what they are. We can call the villains villains, the heroes heroes, the victims victims, and ourselves complicit. And ourselves complicit. We can realize that all this talk about the fate of Earth has nothing to do with the planet's tolerance for higher temperatures, and everything to do with our species' tolerance for self-delusion. And we can understand that when we speak about things like fuel efficiency standards, or gasoline taxes, or methane flaring, we are speaking about nothing less than all we love and all we are. What I'm looking for you from tonight is heroism. I'm not looking for villains or victims. Actions that go beyond special interests, political boxes, material gain or loss. I'm looking for actions to support a viable and healthy planet in every aspect of the work you do, to counteract climate crisis and the degradation of our atmosphere. With every decision you make, whether it's the Northwest National Gas Franchise Agreement to reduce the use of fossil fuels, or the revising of accessory dwelling units, codes to increase housing density that better support efficiencies in transit, I know you can be heroic. I know you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Kelly, followed by Julie Lambert.
My name is Linda Kelly, and I am in Emily Simples' Ward. That's a very difficult piece to follow, because I have a very simple and practical request of you guys tonight. It's related to the fact that you're going to be dealing with the Northwest Natural Agreement coming up here, the next meeting, I believe. I'd like to ask each of you to please be active and to contact your legislators, particularly the people on the Joint Committee for Carbon Reduction, in regards to House Bill 2020, which is our cap and invest bill. I think you must all be aware of it. They've been doing, they've done 84 amendments, and some of it is around their work with Northwest Natural Gas. And although we know natural gas needs to probably go away in the long run, if you can contact your legislators, tell them to move forward with this. They've been working with Northwest Natural to at least get the 22% that's possible in renewables, part of the HB 2020. So there's work on this happening, and it's part of the bill now. So honestly, if you will get this bill, help get this bill passed, it's going to lighten your load to some degree when you come to creating your agreement with Northwest Natural, because a lot of that work will be done. So they need to hear from you as a council, as individual legislators, and it needs to happen right now, because this is when it's happening. So please follow through and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Lambert, followed by Arwen Mastasbane.
Good evening, Mayor and council and my community members. I'm Julie Lambert. Thanks to everyone who came out tonight to address their concerns instead of kicking back in their warm, comfy home. My adopted ward is number nine, formed to give the unhoused a voice as well as community support. I know council have been working towards shelter, including Mayor Venice and Chief Skinner, who have repeatedly requested a place to give people to go, if not just somewhere to go as in a bathroom. I'm temporarily housed, grateful every day for the things that many take for granted: a roof, heating, cooling, a door that locks, a safe place for belongings, including many silly hats so I don't lose my sense of humor, a place to cook meals with friends, as well as many showers and as many potty breaks as I need. Unfortunately, that's not the case for my brothers and sisters who have yet to find that warm, comfy home, or a place within Eugene where they are welcome. This includes the ever-disappearing porta-potties. The lack of adequate bathroom facilities is well-known by elderly, disabled, and children, as well as the homeless, those most in need of them. A community can be measured on how it treats the least of its citizens, and while I'm looking forward to implementation of the TAC report, there are still out those suffering tonight. As a community, I believe we can do better in how we treat one another. Other cities not addressing these issues have put the health of the entire community at risk in withholding a public place to go. Meanwhile, we have public unsanitary dumping, an expensive and necessary health hazard. I'm aware that a council has invested in problem-solving. However, we promised mom and care that we would take better care of one another. And while Eugene is a home's first city, until that occurs, the city will keep seeing things they can't unsee, don't want to see, shouldn't have to see. And I can tell you, though, that it's worse to actually be seen in this light, someone undesirable, unwanted by their community, or even worse, unseen.
Thank you. Thank you. Arwen Mastasbane, followed by Eric Jackson.
My name's Arwen Mastasbane. I live in Ward 1. I'm speaking to you as a provider of street outreach and somebody who has spent what has been deemed a lot of time in the perimeter and the fragmented core, as it was discussed in the work session. I listened with great interest to the work session, so I'm going to speak to what was listed as the immediate initiatives in the presentation. First, I want to say what I really liked. So I really liked hearing you, Mr. Reese, talk about temptation like a pilot project, and that if we're really going to make this effective across Lane County, we need to include Springfield and the voices of rural communities in a very meaningful way. I'd like to ask that all the new initiatives don't center around or hinge on only St. Vincent de Paul as an agency to do them, but to include smaller organizations that currently fill the gaps in service. We also feel the ongoing gaps that you're seeking to address with the TAC. We also, I assure you, run on very small budgets. I also would like to say that what has been missing from the TAC and from everything else I've heard is the meaningful inclusion of voices of homeless people themselves, who know more than any of us what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric Jackson, followed by Timothy Morris.
I'm going to have to give you the abridged version for the time. On April 1st, I organized and moderated a meeting with 37 homeless faction leaders, individuals that speak on behalf of 50 to 70 individual homeless people in the Eugene area. Unarguably legitimate and alarming health, safety concern we face here on these streets of Eugene. I'll do my best to explain this incongruent problem we face and this single disconcerting fact. There is a grand poop problem all over the town, pooping on the east side and pooping on the west side, from the northwest swamps to the south hills out east. Poop, poop, everywhere there's poop. Housed people look around and see piles of human poop, and nowhere a sanitation facility or a porta potty in sight. There was unanimous support on April 1st to ratify this answer from the homeless. We solemnly swear and affirm that when we drop trowel and poop, we will place a beautiful toothpick umbrella safely in the center of our poop pile to exemplify our doing our duty in a responsible manner. This value-added service provided by the human doing the pooping will provide beautification of the human function better dealt with in private, but not yet possible here in Eugene. This, based on the county and city eliminating every facility utilized by homeless people after 10% to 20%, abuse the luxurious box poop closets. Their removal reduces graffiti and vandalism, keeping to the goal of beautification, yet at the same time punishing far too many housed people everywhere in town. We will train all of our homeless, and we will train all of our downtown staff to spot umbrellas in the downtown activity zone and use the proper poop scoopers to employ best practices.
Thank you. Timothy Morris, followed by Sarita Leaf.
Good evening, council. Timothy Morris, Ward 1. So tonight, the TAC report was presented to both the city and county. Before this report was actually presented, for over the last year, several of the points of the report were brought up in city council meetings, county commission meetings. I want to point out specifically, Mayor Venice, you had mentioned at one city council meeting that you support a public shelter, but that is not the final solution to ending homelessness and houselessness, and we can see that in the TAC report. It's very clear that that's very true. We have a housing issue here in Lane County, Eugene, Oregon, everywhere. It's pretty bad. But the 10-point TAC report gives us clear direction on how to address this here in our community. None of the points, it was mentioned earlier, none of the points are about coordination of services and addressing them, outreach to the unhoused where they're at, rather than expecting them to come to us. I personally serve on several budget committees here in the county and the city, and so I want to appreciate Councilor Semple and the other county commissioners' points on the budget and the costs of what this could be, and the costs that we just don't know. However, what we're not considering right now are the ethical costs of ignoring our houseless and homeless people. We're not considering the social costs of being a liberal city not addressing homelessness. And we're not, we're not considering the financial costs of unhoused people going to emergency care shelter, emergency care centers in order to have shelter for an evening, or going to nonprofits continuously in and out. My day job is working in an adult treatment court that addresses alcohol and drug addiction, as well as mental health, and the biggest barrier that our people face is shelter. So I urge you to support it in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarita Leaf, followed by Kathy Geng.
I missed the earlier meeting on the shelter feasibility study, but I want to make two points, and I'm assuming that everyone here, up here, has thoroughly read the report. I'd like to refer to the chart on page 4, which shows that the number of emergency shelter beds by homeless population, there are 364 emergency shelter beds in all of Lane County, and on any given night, there is about 1,365 home, unsheltered people who are living in an inhumane situation, which means there's always a 1,000-bed shortfall. I'd also like to mention on page 7, quote, where is it here? "The current emergency system is privately funded and does not receive any local, state, or federal funding for any operations." Again, I urge everyone to check out this report. It is mind-popping, eye-popping. I have two requests. Beginning as soon as possible, it seems to me, with very little effort. Number one, please find the way to immediately decriminalize the people who cannot, the thousand people who cannot find any bed. It is not supposed to be happening, that they are criminalized because there's no beds available. Number two, as other people were saying, please, public restrooms 24/7 for everyone.
Thank you. Kathy Geng, followed by Stefan Strech.
Kathy Geng, Allen's Ward. My remarks point to possible new 5G directions and consequences if council does not act proactively now to vote for a work session and pass a revised cell ordinance based on aesthetics. 5G-ready antenna, 40 feet from bedrooms here, how might real estate values be impacted? May Day, I received from the National Association of Realtors articles about effects cell towers have on nearby home values. One article, quote, "Results revealed that proximity to cellphone towers negatively affect house values, decreasing as distance from the cell tower increases," unquote. Another article, 94% of home buyers and tenants surveyed said they would not buy or rent near cell towers. 5G-ready antenna planned every 500 feet in cities. Act now to prevent possibly new stigmatized zones where properties do not sell and become zombie houses, and tax bases will fall. I'm writing a white paper, "5G: Tragedy of the Commons. The Stealth Buildout of 2018-19 Without Notice to Neighbors from Eugene and E-Web." Council, with your hegemony over E-Web, act now. You, perhaps more than they, may have liability for lawsuits by the collective intelligence of our educated community, who are already discovering these issues. That your office neglected to inform citizens like myself, advising you via phone and email before the last November election, to pass a revised cell ordinance by January 14, 2019. We can still pass one, although it may not have the same force. Tell E-Web to refund the $3,000 they received per poll, and not to provide electricity to these new cell towers. Show the creative muscle for which the community is famous, and we elected you for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Strech, followed by Pamela Kraus.
Thank you very much, city council and local citizens. I do appreciate the time that you all have taken tonight to hear what I have to say and to hear what my compatriots have already said. My name is Mr. Stefan Strech, and I do believe that I reside in Mr. Pryor's Ward of Legislation. Now, I have lived here in Eugene, Oregon for nigh on 20 years now, and I love Eugene. I love the people of Eugene, and there is far too much... I love the people of Eugene, and there is far too much that is absolutely wrong that is going on in this city. For years now, I have seen the noose of liberal government slip around the necks of the people of this city in the cruelest and most unimaginable way. The local drum circle was faced with oppression, and disabled folk were told that they had to suffer in the blistering heat, and this is wrong. Now, I aim to educate the council here, and this is about more than just myself, it's about the will of the people. I'm running for Lane Community College Board of Directors, Seat 7, but I had to take a break from that because I was faced with an issue. There was a young woman who asked me to take her fishing, and I said to myself, "Mr. Strech, this is obviously a woman in dire need of an education." So, we went on down to Dexter Lake. I directed her towards the secret fishing spot, which she did not believe was there, used Google Maps instead of my directions, found the fishing spot. I told her, "The fish is in the lake." So, cast into the lake, took only about 15, 20 minutes, 18-inch trout literally hopped out of the water into this girl's arms, and I aim to tell you, the biggest fish she's ever caught. And I aim to educate all the people of Lane Community College the same way I educate this young woman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pamela Kraus, followed by our final speaker, Sabra Markroft.
Good evening again. My name is Pamela Kraus. I now live in Springfield. I'm wearing the same shirt. I still believe all these things. So, ditto, 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 ditto about 40 times for this evening, please. It's a large community. It's not really disjointed from Springfield either, and I spend most of my time here. I would like the city to provide a nice readable map that everyone can use that points out open usable bathrooms, wash stations, and drinking fountains. I was appalled for the nice dance event I was dancing in last month. Wonderful, beautiful fountain was there I'd never seen before. Right after the event, it was absconded away. The single one across from Keesey Square is now still behind a fence. That's wrong. I use Saturday Market. I enjoy it. I walk over to dance with the drum circle. When I got there last week, I was really glad. I had brought sunscreen just by chance to hand out because it was going to be a hot day. People couldn't even use their umbrellas for protection. What the heck? It's not right. And I have watched EPD, LTD, and the Public Library send people out of town. It is a ghost town to me now. That is not right. I want the city to please provide a statement about the statute, stature of Keesey, I mean, not Keesey, Free Speech Plaza. I want the name and the new regulations for it issued everywhere so everyone has a common Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Sabra Markroft.
My name is Sabra Markroft. I reside in Ward 1, just barely. I'm here, actually, to make a fairly simple suggestion, maybe two suggestions. It's about the companion animals at the dawn camp. With the dawn camp, we have a situation in which we have both the most dedicated and the least experienced of companion animal owners trying to accommodate their animals. This can provide a whole bunch of different difficulties. This has led to St. Vincent de Paul apparently deciding not to go forward with allowing companion animals. Understandable. My suggestion is this. When I was a young child, we had a thing called bicycle safety school, where we, as children, were required to take this bicycle safety course in order to have the freedom of our neighborhoods on bicycles. I suggest that such a course be made available to companion animal owners so that they can become adept at handling the behaviors and mitigating the problems possibly caused by their companion animals in shelter programs in general. Added to this suggestion would be to do what Eagan does to accommodate companion animals at their sites, which is to provide kennels so that the, you know, portable kennels, so that the companion animal can sleep next to their people and feel safe and be less troublesome. I think with those two and the addition of some of the big tents being used for companion animal owners and others not, so that allergies can be accommodated, we could have an easy solution that would work for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize for not making this suggestion through regular channels.
Thank you very much, and that is our closing of our public forum. Are there councilors who wish to speak to things they've heard? Okay, I have Counselor Clark, Counselor Semple, Counselor Zelenka, anybody else? Okay, take it away. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not used to doing this, and I'm going to stand up for Allen a little bit here. For those who were asking him direct questions about the 5G work session, I'm the one who said I would put a poll out. The staff did the job of sending me that note, and frankly, I just haven't gotten it done yet and sent it around to my colleagues, so it's my fault, but it'll get done. Thanks.
Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came to talk about these important subjects. A particular interest to me is what's going on at Free Speech Plaza on Saturdays. The changes there came up very fast. There was not a lot of education or advertisement about them. The people at Saturday Market didn't know about it until 10 days beforehand, although the decision was made in January and signed in March by both Steve and John. In the beginning, it was raining and cold, and there were no canopies allowed, and people were drenched, and they couldn't sell half of their stuff because it got ruined in the water. They were told that they could hold up umbrellas. You couldn't fasten an umbrella because that would be like a canopy. This Saturday, people had their umbrellas, and they were told by the information booth that they could hold them. And then the police came through and told them they could not, with no warning, just like no warning about needing a permit. I went down and I talked to these people, and I watched the blisters form. I said, "Why don't you wear a hat or a shirt?" And they said, "It's too hot." Meanwhile, there's three other blocks with canopies. It's cool. People are protected. There is definitely a separation of class. There is definitely a lack of equity. Some people are protected, and some people are forbidden, even with legitimate health reasons. Cancer. I saw the palest skin I've ever seen. I saw sunburns. This is a health issue. It's an equal, it's a disability issue that you cannot be there and sell because you cannot be in the sun, and you cannot hold a parasol. This is a parasol, and I don't like it. We have to be accommodating. People have said they would bring canopies, and Saturday Market has extra 25-pound weights. They've said they would bring their own 25-pound weights. The drum circle, the drums get wet, or they get too hot. Something has to be done about this, and it needs to be done fairly and with enough notice. Running out of time, but we need some bathrooms downtown. We have new sandwich boards with a great map showing you the zone and two dots for the two bathrooms you can access. If you have money, you can go eat somewhere and use their potty, but if you don't have money, you can't pee.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for coming out this evening. There is a process for a work session poll to come out, and when it comes out, I will support the work session poll on 5G, as I think everybody in the council probably will. Second point is that, as I mentioned, the global warming potential of methane at 80. The global warming potential means how many times more effective or dangerous is a gas compared to CO2? And the number's not 80, it's 28. That comes from the IPCC Fifth Assessment Report, and the sixth one isn't due out for 2021, so until then, 28 is the right number to use.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
Well, thank you. And thanks to Counselor Clark for offering to put out a poll for work session poll. I've been waiting for that. But I would like the opinion of the city attorney of whether we could declare a moratorium on 5G if we chose to.
I can certainly, if you're asking me to do a dress specifically the anti-commodering doctrine that was raised this evening, well, I'd like some time to be able to provide you something in writing on that.
Thank you. And I agree with everything Counselor Semple said about the umbrellas, the need for restrooms. I would add, we need places for people to sit, to sit and to relieve themselves. I could do a rhyme if I wanted to. Oh, we got a little comic relief, but thanks to...
He said he does some funny. That's good.
Thanks to everyone who came to speak to us, and I am very concerned about the lack of bathrooms. That is absolutely an essential thing. Unfortunately, we're not made to do without them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comments? I also want to thank everyone who came and look forward to following up, hearing more. The council work session on 5G will be very helpful. I think a conversation about what's happening in the Free Speech Plaza be worthwhile and what's, what our potential is for better sanitation. All appropriate requests, and we'll be back to talk about Northwest Natural pretty soon. So, thank you all for that testimony. And I think we are now ready to go on to the regular order of business of our meeting. The first item is the consent calendar. Have a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, thank you very much. That passes. Next up is we have a public hearing with a possible action, and this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so I'm going to work my way through the script. I am opening the public hearing on a proposed ordinance to vacate a portion of Pearl Alley located between East 5th Alley and East 5th Avenue and providing for an immediate effective date. Oh, maybe I should let the, do you need to introduce this topic?
No, Mayor, I don't.
Okay. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk, and it looks like we have one or two. Do any councilors need to disclose any bias, conflicts of interest, ex parte communications, or abstentions pursuant to EC 9.70653? Counselor Clark?
I had a, with regard to ex parte, I had a conversation with the applicant's public relations professional where I was asked a question or two about this, but I don't recall we discussed any specific details of it, nor do I believe it inhibits my ability to make a fair and impartial decision. Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess we all did. We probably, my guess is that we all did have a conversation. So, I'm assuming that everyone's in more or less the same situation. Do we steal? I'm going to have Lauren Summers, Assistant City Attorney, step up to the mic and help you through this. Oh, thank you.
Already done.
Thank you, Mayor. So, councilors, to the extent that you have had ex parte contacts, that is conversations or access to information outside of the record of this decision that's been provided to you thus far, that the other members of the council don't have, then now would be the time to declare them. Counselor Clark did a good job. You need to declare them in enough detail so that if anyone in the audience wants to rebut them during their testimony at public hearing, they can do that. And so, to the extent that you each have ex parte contacts, they should be declared individually.
Okay, so why don't we just go down the line? How about that?
I have nothing to declare.
I did have a meeting with a representative of the applicant, had a brief conversation about the issue, but I don't think that that impairs my ability to function on this particular item.
Exactly what he said.
Same thing.
And, oh, yeah, go for it. Same thing.
Same thing.
Did it already.
Yeah, same thing. My conversation basically focused on the timeline for when things were going to be coming up, so that was pretty much it, so no influence.
And actually, I also had that same conversation, so we all touched that base.
And if I may interrupt...
Oh, except for, oh, except for one. Excuse me.
She declared she didn't have a conversation.
What I feel like I'm hearing councilors say is that you have the ability to make a fair and impartial decision based on the criteria in the land use code.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Let's see. Okay, so I guess I still have to read this. Before we proceed, I want to state that anyone testifying has the right to address and rebut the substance of the ex parte communication just disclosed. Have staff received any challenges to a councilor's impartiality submitted pursuant to Eugene Code Section 9.70655?
I'm seeing no.
No. Okay, now, city manager, would you please introduce the topic?
Tonight's public hearing is concerning a request to vacate an improved public right-of-way consisting of a portion of Pearl Alley located between East 5th Avenue and East 5th Alley. The applicant is Obie Companies, who own all of the abutting properties under the name Mildred O.L.L.C. Several letters and emails have been received expressing support for the proposed right-of-way vacation, and council is requested to consider taking final action on the ordinance to vacate the alley tonight following the close of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Testimony presented at this public hearing should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria and other criteria that the speaker believes apply to the decision. The applicable approval criteria for this proposed vacation of improved public right-of-way are from Eugene Code Section 9.8725, which states that "The city council shall approve or approve with conditions and reservations of easements the vacation of improved public right-of-way, public ways acquired with public funds, or undeveloped subdivision and partition plats or portions thereof, including public right-of-way and improved public easements located therein, only if the council finds that approval of the vacation is in the public interest. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue." The request to speak forms have been separated into three groups, and speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the proposed vacation, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the proposed vacation. And we have just one, so you satisfy that criteria. Please give your name and address when you come to the podium to speak. You will have three minutes to comment. The timer and lights on the podium indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of the three minutes. I now open the public hearing with those in support of the proposed vacation, and our sole speaker is Casey Barrett.
Thank you, Mayor Venice, council members. I'll keep this short. We all can get home. This really was the last segment of alley that should have been included in our initial alley vacation application. I think a number of factors, not knowing well the alley vacation process, also trying to decouple it with the county process and the land that they owned, it wasn't included. This is one small segment of land. This is one small segment of land to the north of the alleys that were already vacated that is bordered by property that we own both to the east, to the west, to the north, and land that we're leasing for 99 years from the county to the south. We are improving this land and by moving forward with this vacation, you will allow us to fulfill the envision of the development as planned and approved. I also thought it was worth noting that Mildred O is the owner of the land. Mildred O is my great-grandmother, Mildred Obie. And it's also appropriate to note that this development can't move forward, the Gordon Hotel, without Mildred's approval. The Gordon Hotel, of course, named after my great-grandfather Gordon Obie, so Mildred still has a final say over what great-grandpa gets to do. So, thank you very much, appreciate your support.
Thank you. Is there a staff response? Okay. The applicant may now have their opportunity to provide final rebuttal. Guess we're taking care of that. Are there any questions that counselors wish to ask of staff? Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I had two, two questions. One was about the notice. It said 76% of the affected area approved. There's only two buildings there, and how did it get to 76%? And they own it all, so I didn't, not that this is going to have any material to unpack, just curious.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. Nick Joyolo, Associate Planner with the Planning Department of this, the percentage you're talking about is the affected area that includes, I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but you go out beyond the properties on both sides to each street and then you go, I believe it's 400 feet in each direction, and you look at all of that area and then you calculate how much of the area do you have approval from.
So, it's not just adjacency to the alley, it's...
Right. It includes, yeah, properties beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, are there any utilities in the alley?
I'm sorry.
Any utilities in the alley?
Yes.
And so, how does that get dealt with if we need access to them?
They're going to relocate those and put in private facilities and then hook into the public facilities that are in the street, I think on each side, both in Pearl and Oak.
So, once they're done, there won't be any public utilities in there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. At this time, I close the public hearing and the record. Does any counselor object to taking action today? Everybody okay with this? All right. All right. So, can I have a motion on the table, please?
Yes. Where is it? Where is it? It should be right here. Right here. I move to adopt an ordinance vacating a portion of Pearl Alley located between East Fifth Alley and East Fifth Avenue and providing for an immediate effective date.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And that is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And now, we can move on to our next public hearing. An ordinance concerning restrictions on the distribution of single-use service ware adding Section 6.870 and 6.872 to the Eugene Code 1971 and amending Code Section 6.990 of that code. I'm opening the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer and the red light indicates the end of the three minutes. And we have four speakers. First Brennan Matherley, followed by Cindy Matherley.
Thank you, Mayor Venice and council members. Good evening, I guess. I'm, it's kind of unfortunate to say, but I think some of us in this building kind of suck, and that's in relation to the straws. To put it bluntly, every time we use a plastic straw, it's not very good, considering that we have about, like, maybe eight billion people on this planet. And if even, like, half of those people use a straw every day, that's four billion people using a straw. Well, that's not good. This straw-mageddon is just the tip of the iceberg. Scientists have found high amounts of microplastics raining down everywhere, from the pristine areas of the Pyrenees Mountains to remote areas of the Arctic. Our planet is being covered in plastics and we need to ban and replace the worst single-use plastics now, straws being just the beginning. We know that use of this plastic over time is toxic and causing great damage to the environment and wildlife. It's a hormone disruptor within our bodies now and threatens future generations also. It, it's really sad that our youth is saddled with dealing with the effects of today's abuse of single-use plastics. Yeah. Trash plastic straws need cleanup at site and transportation to either incinerator or landfill, or end up trashing up our sidewalks, floating in our waterways, or injuring wildlife. Thankfully, there are so many different ways to suck less. There's reusable, there's reusables such as metal, glass, silicone straws, and even ones made of, like, hay. And, yeah. We understand that we have brothers and sisters in the community that have special needs that might require a bendable straw, for example. There are silicon reusable straws that are extremely pliable and washable. Many local businesses have embraced sucking less. We know of over 40 local, 50 local businesses that have found great savings in switching to non-plastic. They've saved money from not automatically handing out straws since fewer customers actually ask for them. It's also been a great marketing point for their business to demonstrate their sustainable practices to their customers when they use non-plastic straws. We'd like to see the city council pledge tonight to pass an ordinance with immediacy to put Eugene at the forefront of reducing the city's single-use plastic scourge. We ask you to be decisive and to move fast for implement ordinances that would make non-plastic straws on request only. While you're at it, include a ban on, in single-use plastic bags, polystyrene containers, plastic cups, and single-use service ware. It's truly the fastest way for all, for us all to suck less. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Matherley, followed by Timothy, Timothy Morris.
I'll keep this short and sweet. I know everybody wants to get home. My name is Cindy Matherley of Eugene and I help out my son with the Stralis Oregon campaign that he's been running. Thank you, honorable council members. Thank you, the Honorable Mayor of Venice, for this hearing tonight. We know there's so many important issues that take up your time. We really feel like this is just a no-brainer. We should call attention to the need to pass a city ordinance like we are on fire ASAP, banning single-use plastics. That would include bags, polystyrene takeout containers, plastic cups, utensils, and service ware. Something that is used for seconds or minutes should never, ever last hundreds, maybe thousands of years. We'd ask that you make non-plastic straws request only. My son and I have sat in on state hearings in Salem at the Capitol. Honestly, as a city, we can do better. We can have more robust ordinances than the bills that are now proposed statewide. We can lead the way. We can do more because we know more. We can do better now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Timothy Morris, followed by Ralph McDonald.
Hello again. Timothy Morris, Ward 1. I'll be very brief. So, it's the triple bottom line. It's there, it's environmentally conscious, it's fiscally conscious, it's easy to make this decision, in my opinion. And just as a final note, I'll leave you with an anecdote. I used to be a waiter and the amount of straws that I would hold in my hand is just awful. So, please, for my sake, please ban it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Ralph McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor Venice and council, for taking the issue up. Again, I'm Ralph McDonald and Betty Taylor's Ward, Ward 2. Our Sustainability Commission had given the council a letter regarding throwaway single-use service ware and, you know, as much as we'd like to see the full, the full spectrum of plastic waste considered, certainly I wouldn't want to say anything tonight that would be to the detriment of Brandon and Cynthia's campaign on, on straws. It's exemplary. They've gone to many, many hours of legwork going to restaurants around town, going to the legislature. Plastic straws do decompose eventually. They're in the stomachs of most sea turtles, they're in humans, in microplastics. You've got plastics in your gut right now. You know, we'd like to have less plastics in our, in our own metabolisms. It's a good thing to do. One final thing is that there's, you know, we, we have a couple of committees that have been looking at this for over a year. One is the Sustainability Commission has been looking at it, but also there's a committee called Citizens for Responsible Use of Plastics. And we have three area waste professionals who've been sitting in with us on that. And I'll mention that one of the people, a professional from the University of Oregon, has shown us many what are called sporks. A spork is like, it's a combination fork and knife and spoon. So, instead of saying that, you know, you could have three things on request, you could just have one thing and you could cut your, your burger or your french fry or whatever you're cutting, you know, with the edge of it and, and it would cut down two-thirds, even those that are requested, by, by calling it a spork and saying that restaurants can give that out. And Counselor Simple is showing you an example of the same in a perfectly apropos green color for the Oregon Ducks. So, that's something to consider. And also the cups, you know, I don't know if you can do it in this first go-around with Michael's presentation, but, you know, cups are, I've got a couple of seconds. My father was a potato farmer in Idaho in 1955 and we used reusable potato sacks because we couldn't afford, in 1955 in Parma, Idaho, brand-new potato sacks for his three-acre potato farm. He had to give it up a couple of years later when everybody planted potatoes in Idaho, but, you know, people who can't afford 25 cents or something for a reasonable cup, they'll bring cups, they'll realize that economically, you know, they save money by, by washing the Five Kids cups and saving $1.25 every time they go to a fast food restaurant. So, the, the economic argument that, that people can't afford to, to not buy a cup, a plastic cup, it really doesn't wash. Thank you.
Thank you. Doesn't wash. Well done. Well done. All right. And that closes the public hearing. Does any counselor object to taking action tonight?
Yes.
You object to taking action tonight? Okay. Then we will schedule action for a later date.
That's true.
Yes, Counselor Zelenka.
I'm wondering if we can squeeze it in on Wednesday? Because time is of the essence on this one. Or to get the, get it done before the, um, state acts. I don't know what they're called.
Yeah, we can work with the mayor and, and talk about trying to put it in on Wednesday. So, we'll spend some time talking.
All right. We'll, we'll come back to, for action on Wednesday then. Thank you. That good point, time is of the essence on that one. All right. And our final item of the night, action, East Third Alley Property Disposition. Excuse me? Do we need an explanation of this item in any way? Or can we just put them on?
Well, she went to all the trouble to make one up.
Oh, you've got a presentation? Oh, oh. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, last year, we brought you an offer made by a private party for the purchase of a small segment of land adjacent to Ferry Street Bridge, and today we're asking you to take action on deal points. So, the odd-shaped piece of land is 1,270 square feet and is a remnant of several pieces of land that were acquired for road improvements in the 50s. And then, just to reorient you to where this is, it's adjacent to Ferry Street Bridge and located between Third and Fourth Avenues at the intersection of East Third Alley and Ferry Alley. Jeff Wilson-Charles, a local property owner, approached the city with a proposal to purchase the property shown here in blue. He owns all of the adjacent properties, including Rye Restaurant, the Watershed Building, and the new bungalow redevelopment, which houses Akira Restaurant. As a reminder, we're following the property disposition process approved by council in 2017. After receiving an offer from Mr. Wilson-Charles, council directed us to bring back deal points and so we've been working internally and with the property owner to finalize the deal points and determine how the property can be transferred. And I'll summarize these details next. So, as you can probably see in the packet, in the map in your packet, today's action specifically concerns the part of the property shown here in orange. The portion in blue is unimproved alley. Mr. Wilson-Charles applied for a vacation of the blue portion through the city's established unimproved alley vacation process, which requires planning director approval. And so, finalization of that process is pending council's decision tonight on the orange portions. Public Works has determined that the orange portion, about 518 square feet, is not right-of-way and there aren't any uses planned for this site. And so, this is the portion of, the subject of today's action. So, for the deal points, which are in Attachment B, Mr. Wilson-Charles has offered to pay the appraised price, which was determined through the alley vacation process. And also, at last year's work session, council expressed concerns about billboards and tree removal on the site. So, in, in response to this, the terms for the sale prohibits the placement of billboards, advertising signs, or banners, and requires city approval prior to the removal of any trees. And these restrictions will apply to both the alley and non-alley portions of the property. And so, the city manager's recommendation today is approval of the sale consistent with the terms in Attachment B.
Okay. Ready for a motion? Oh, Counselor Saret has a question.
Uh, no. Well, unlike the other item of the alley vacation, on this one, I will declare a potential conflict of interest because my husband works for Rye Restaurant and this has the potential to enhance their business and thus my income. So, it's probably a far cry from a conflict of interest, but I should declare it. And I did the last time this topic came up.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. All right. Ready motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to sell the property identified in Attachment A to Three Buysers Group LLC, consistent with the terms included in Attachment B.
Second. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And that passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting for this precious moment and we are adjourned.